Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 4th zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that Commissioners Barre, Commissioner Barrow, and Commissioner Wells are absent tonight. Okay, motion to...wait, let me go back and do...at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to talk on any item not on the agenda, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Acceptance of the minutes from the October 14th meeting. Motion by Commissioner Dalton, second by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Acceptance of the minutes from the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of October 14th.
Move.
Move by...motion by Commissioner Nance.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dalton. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number six, public hearing to recommend the following zoning review ID 2038.09 lots B2C2, B2C1, B2A2, B2A1, B3A1, A2...wait, B3A1, A2, B3A1, A1, B3A2B, B3A2A, 1A1, 2A1, 2A2, 2A3, 3 and 4 of Bayou Estates for Sherri Gauthier. Is that how you pronounce it?
Sherri Gauthier, yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, members. Mr. Chairman, Stephen Turo on behalf of Louis and Cynthia Stafford and Ms. Sherri Gauthier. I come to you tonight with a proposal to rezone a certain piece of property located in Santa Ma. It's along Highway 431 next to Bayou Estates subdivision. You have here...may I approach to show you the map?
We have a map here, I think. Yeah, we have a little handout here, right.
What we've got here is, subject property is on Highway 431, which is this line. I don't know if you can see it or not, but it is right where this little hump is. You can see that little hump right there. And we'll relate that to this hump here. Same property in yellow here, and it's just a little that little mark. What I'm requesting tonight is a change from rural zoning to mixed use two, or MU2. Now, we've got a long highway, 431. Every piece of yellow on this line here is already zoned commercial. If you look at the entire parish, it's one of the most...well, they're the most...has the most, if not one of the most, commercial zonings in the entire parish. But we aren't asking for a commercial zoning. We only ask for mixed use two. They've got many differences in the two zoning requirements. Mixed use two doesn't allow any trailer parks, mobile home parks, no bars and lounges, no apartment complexes, and many others, which I'm sure all of you are aware of. Now, we've got, on the second map, this is the specific property area we're speaking of. You've got frontage on Highway 431 all along Bayou Boulevard. And before we go any further, I'd like to, if this is possible, I'd like to request an amendment to take out lots 3 and 4 from the zoning request. It was originally proposed with 3 and 4. There was a mistake, so if we could, I'd like to amend that to not include these two lots in the zoning request, if that's possible.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's just something we'll have to take into consideration, so it's...
Furthermore, I would also request that those two lots be realigned, just like every other lot along Peggy Street, to each have frontage on Peggy Street so that it just conforms with the community or with the property in there in the subdivision right now. Right now, you've got houses all along Peggy Street, and if we flip those two, it would actually exceed the subdivision requirements for each lot's size. And it would just make that whole street uniform and as opposed to having two lots facing a busier street, Bayou Boulevard. So that would be an amendment I would request, if that's possible, tonight. Now, you may have some traffic concerns with the property. You've got...
If you could kind of stand behind the podium so they can hear the audio, please.
Sorry about that. I like to move around.
We don't have a wireless. I wish we did. Can you can...
I'll make do.
Okay.
And we've got here, each of the total property on Highway 431 is currently subdivided into 10 lots, which have frontage on Highway 431. The parish approved that subdivision some time ago, the subdivision of the lots, not a subdivision. So we've got 10 possible...or 10 lots with road frontage on Highway 431, which we don't want 10 different intersections on Highway 431. We don't want that whatsoever. So if we can rezone the property to mixed use two, we would be willing to stipulate that. There will only be one entrance and one exit on the property, and that's it. We don't want to have 10 or 11 different individual mixed use two lots with 10 different entrances and exits on the Highway 431. So, like I said, we would be willing to stipulate to that request and that everything would be as one contiguous tract and not subdivided into 10 commercial lots or 10 mixed use two Next, we've got another blow-up. We like our blow-ups. Subject property here is in green, along Highway 431, which is all within maybe a mile and a half of the subject property. Everything in yellow you see here is zoned commercial. We aren't asking for a commercial. We don't want commercial. All we're asking for is mixed use two, which again has many less or far more restrictions than a commercial zoning restriction would have. We've got the subject property here, and the entire block, which is maybe a half a mile from the subject property, is zoned commercial. We've got a commercial lot across the street and a commercial lot maybe 200 yards down the road from it. We've got a, I think it's a barroom here, a pizza shop, and it's basically a strip mall.
Are those actually zoned commercial, though?
These?
No. Those?
These?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's come from the parish zoning map, if you'd like to see it on the...
No, I've got a copy.
But again, it goes along with...it's not contrary to the zoning restrictions around the subject property. And again, we aren't asking for anything exceeding mixed use two. Only mixed use two, not commercial. Again, I'd like you to consider the amendments taking out lots 3 and 4 and basically realigning them towards Peggy Street so that each has frontage on Peggy Street as opposed to the busier Bayou Boulevard. And taking out those two lots and approving the rezoning of mixed use two of the subject property. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments by Commissioners?
I just want to...I guess I just want to go over a couple of things with you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So you want lots 2 and 3 removed, and I'm going to have to defer to staff in legal. I don't...
Lots 3 and 4, sir.
I'm sorry, 3 and 4. You want lots 3 and 4 removed, and I don't know that that's an issue, but I'll defer to staff in legal to opine on that. Having lots 3 and 4 realigned to front on Peggy Street, that's...we can't do that here. That has to be a separate application to resubdivide those two lots.
Okay.
Offering a stipulation to control access on a zoning is also not a possibility because can't condition a rezoning application. However, you know, you did touch on at least one issue that I personally have with your application, and that is the fact that, you know, we've got a multitude of little lots that barring any restrictions or any control, you could have a...you could create an enormity of circulation problems in that area. But, you know, but there's also some drainage considerations and other considerations over there. And I guess my question to you is just, have you thought about, you know, coming back and asking for a rezoning to a spud, which is something that would allow you the opportunity to do everything that you're talking, that you want to do? You know, you just have to put forth a little bit more effort in actually developing a schematic plan of what this thing's going to look like and how you propose to handle the circulation, what kind of square footage, and the uses. And it would grant you a whole lot more flexibility on this piece of property than to just come and ask a straight rezoning.
We have not specifically considered that consideration. We don't have any plans for the property right now. It's simply, we've been approached by...it's a restaurant and an optical shop. We've been approached by them to put something on the property, but we have no...there are no contracts in place, nothing at all as far as what the property is going to be used for. So we really have no considerations, or I guess I should say on what to consider, for the property because we have nothing, you know, to actually put the property or to put on the property.
Right. Well, like I said, those are the concerns that I just wanted to verbalize them before we go to the public hearing, so you could ponder that for a while.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No additional questions or comments at this time. I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Make sure you sign in, please, and then state your name. Sir, if you would, I think you can sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Eric Morris, and I live next to adjacent to those two lots, 3 and 4. And the concern was making those commercial because that'd be putting two sides of commercial property, one facing my back and one to my side. If he was to realign the lots, I wouldn't have much of a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Randy Clout. I'm the councilman in that district, District 6. I guess in speaking, I've been talking to planning and zoning for the parish, Ricky Compton, his department, also talking to the landowners and talking to some of the residents that the commercial property backs up to on Peggy Street. And I guess what Mr. Turo is trying to say, and he's also got some feedback, is that the landowners are not...their application went for the whole piece of land. They didn't have...they wouldn't have a problem taking those back lots off and actually even a buffer on Bayou Estates Boulevard to where nothing from whatever they do on 431 is going to affect any entrance or anything to the subdivision. And so, he'd also, you know, taken a look at, not necessarily knowing all the different titles between the spud to pud, and they're basically looking at MU2. And one of the key things that was brought out in all my conversation is basic, is communications. And you guys did a good job. They sent out to the people that had boarded the back. But in communication with them, they weren't, you know, there's no...everybody wants to know naturally when somebody moves in and does something next to you, what are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? Well, Mr. Turo, like Mr. Turo said, right now, they have no big plans for it. They're drawing up things like that. One thing about it, we do know that within that area of 431, that you would probably want to minimize the traffic flowing that...I mean, I guess according to law, right, Ricky? They can go sell those 10 lots to people to build 10 houses, right?
Correct.
You know? And so, you know, we hadn't had any major traffic improvements in that area right now. We've got some on the books, coming down the road, maybe five years or so, you know? So I would think that I would like the commission to consider, let's do something with that place. Whether the folks have to back down tonight and resubmit, think about what they want to do, if that's what the wishes of the commission is, that's all right. But basically, looking at 10 more houses right there in a row coming into 431 is not a good idea. And I'm definitely with the landowner and with the residents about not having any commercial property all the way into Peggy Street and affecting Bayou Estates Boulevard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Good evening. My name is Melinda Morris, and I am a resident of the subdivision. I am the lot next to the two that he wants to turn toward facing Peggy Street. And my question to you is, is Bayou Drive considered part of the subdivision, or is it considered just a thoroughway? And I would like for you to consider turning those lots toward Peggy Street to where it is a subdivision continuation, where there is residents next to us and not commercial. We don't have a problem with the back part, but if you were living there, you wouldn't want a commercial next door to you and behind you. You would want residents next to you. Behind us, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So, do you consider Bayou State Drive a part of the subdivision or part of...
I don't know if we can really answer that.
That subdivision was actually built before there was zoning. So it's an older subdivision. My understanding was it was...that was always part of the subdivision.
Okay.
Now, you'd have to check with staff, go back and do some research to find out, but that's always been my understanding.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment? No one else wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments from Commissioners?
Well, considering that there's several amendments or requests that are being made pertaining to this, some of this needs to be taken care of before he comes to us making a request. I also think that it'd be better for them to look into the possibility of proposing a spud rather than just coming and asking for an MU2. So I'm going to make a motion to defer till next month to give the applicant time to work with staff, go ahead and fine tune your proposal. Because you want to change the configuration of lots 3 and 4, and that's something that you need to...that's a separate issue. Come back to us with a clean proposal as far as exactly the number or which lots you want to include in the proposal, and talk to staff about the possibility of a spud concept. That's my motion.
Second.
All right. And I guess I'll ask you, Ricky, do you think that's enough time if they do it for the next month? Is there...or are you...the level of detail would be required?
First, I'd ask the applicant if they're interested in that. And then, secondly, you know, I haven't been in the private sector world here for a while, but I don't imagine that that is enough time to prepare a spud concept that would be acceptable to you guys. But I think that deferring the item until the applicant comes back, if that's what they want to do, is probably a course of action that I would like to see.
Or they can pull their application, can't they, to give themselves more time?
Sure, and just come back when they're ready.
If they'd rather do that.
I'm just going to comment also on the Bayou Road. I mean, you know, looking at the subdivision map, I think Commissioner Marshon is correct. This is, in all likelihood, it looks like it's part of the subdivision. It has that appearance, that flavor to it. And, you know, those two lots are directly across the street from other residential lots on Bayou Boulevard. You may save you a lot of grief and aggravation by leaving them, you know, the way they are and not have to submit a separate application to resubdivide those two lots, because that's what it's going to take, is a separate application to resubdivide those two lots, where you could...I think they function fine the way you have them. But I think if you took the rest of your lots and you came in with a spud, you would do yourself a lot of good.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor here.
Well, I think the question is...
No, you have a motion and a second.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I know.
So...
But I think we...under the discussion, we're going to ask the applicant if the 30 days was adequate time, right?
Yeah, and that's kind of...
Members, we'll go ahead and withdraw?
Well, we can look at the 30 days, or at least get a status update in 30 days. If they're ready, they come back. If not, then...
Well, if they want to withdraw, that's their problem. There's nothing outside...
I never said that they couldn't withdraw it. I left the option. I just...that's...they've always got that option.
We'll come back in 30 days, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So you want the motion to go forward, or are you going to come back?
We will come back in 30 days and update the commission on the process.
And ask for extension more?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess, Michael, that you withdraw your motion and let him just appear before us?
No, I think we still need to defer. I think Mr. Marshon's motion still goes.
Yeah, I think it still works with the motion.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. So, a motion by Michael Marshon, seconded by Bob Nance for deferral for 30 days for the applicant to come back to us. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Members, and Chairman.
Mr. Clout, you have...yeah, you may.
I want to thank you all very much. But I just want to let you all know, and may Ricky clear this up, but also, this is...I'm getting inklings from people that are asking about...we rezoned the parish, of course, you know, and just took a look at it and all. That they, like, there's some background, like as if there's, you know, this is their one chance in their life to rezone their property. And I'm not talking about this application. I just want to make it clear to the public that this is not...
No, it's not.
That any good application that's worth its salt will be heard by this board.
And we'll work with them as best we can, absolutely.
I just want to make that clear. And I know, and I've worked with Ricky from the start on this, and he's never even gave that impression, you know, and I've never heard it out of you guys. I want to just make it clear to the public, right?
No, we thank you.
Yeah. Just if you've got something worth looking at, bring it forward. It'll float a sink, one of the two. Thank you, sir.
That's right. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Let me get my agenda here. Item number seven, public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code for Recommendations A, Section 17, 161, Overview of Business Park Development Standards.
Yes, sir. The issue here is, the current business park ordinance simply refers to the commission as the entity reviewing and approving the business park development. Historically, it's been coming to the zoning commission. And pursuant to legal counsel, the zoning commission doesn't have the authority to grant any final approvals. And so to ensure clarity and make sure that we do what we're supposed to do, we're simply inserting the word "planning" in front of the word "commission" in the ordinance so that business park development plans will go to the planning commission for final approval. That's the extent of the amendment.
Okay. Questions, comments by Commissioners? No questions, comments at this time. I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions from Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend adoption...recommend to the parish council adoption of the proposed ordinance to amend Section 17-161 of the code.
Second.
We have a motion by Julio Dumas to recommend that the council adoption of the new code, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item 7B, amend the Ascension Parish Development Code for recommendations for Section 17-29A and 17-84 Neighborhood Business Overlay Zone.
Yes, sir. Likewise, the ordinance refers to the parish planning and zoning commission. And again, this is a situation where, you know, plans are being reviewed and final approval is being granted where the zoning commission can't do that. So the intent here is for us to delete reference to the zoning commission and simply say the parish planning commission. So it's just a cleanup ordinance to make the standard in the code, you know, give it some clarity and be specific as to who's doing what, and comply with state law.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments from Commissioners? No comments at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to make these changes.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt the revisions by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. 17C, amend the Ascension Parish Development Code, Section 17, 181, Development Standard for Historical Site Overlay Zones.
And the same thing here, sir. The zoning commission doesn't have the authority to make final approvals. So the intent here is to simply replace in the ordinance where it says zoning with the word "planning." I just want to point out to staff there's a couple of places that you're missing on the ordinance. So you might want to scrub the document, make sure you got it. You got them all. But basically, it's a cleanup to simply replace the word "zoning" with the word "planning." And the planning commission would see these, much like the last two we just heard, for final approval moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? We'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Commissioner Dalton for approval. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number eight, zoning subcommittee report.
You know, like these last three that we just heard a public hearing, we've got a number of little cleanup things that we're going to be bringing before you next month. I checked with staff, and I believe the documents are almost complete, so they'll probably be going out to you guys, to the rest of the members of the commission, probably later than Monday. But what we're asking for is a public hearing for three items. In legal, can we do all three at one time, or do we need to do them individually?
I would do them individually.
Okay. So the first item that we're asking for a public hearing next month on is an ordinance that revises the mobile home park regulations to simply ensure that it is consistent with the adopted fee schedule... the adopted fee schedule. We really need to do that prior to the end of the year. We'd love to start the year with a, with an ordinance that, where the fee schedule and the standards are all uniform rather than continue any conflict. So timing is of the essence for that one. So with that, I would make a motion to hold a public hearing to revise the mobile home park regulations to ensure consistency with the adopted fee schedule on December 9th.
Second.
We have a motion to review the mobile home park regulations by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition?
Object.
Commissioner Marchand objects. Any other objection? Motion carries.
The second item is, it's on the ordinance to revise the development code, you know, and the intent here is to clarify exactly what it is that we require the applicant to submit with respect to the development standards. You know, we don't really, we don't really make it clear as to what they're supposed to require, and so what we're asking them to do is to, am I ahead one?
You skipped one.
I'm skipped one. I might as well finish that one. So what we're doing, what we're doing there is, is we're stipulating that they have to provide us with a list of what their development standards are going to be so that they, so that we have a clear picture when we review it, you know, what modifications they're doing to the development standards, because they may not be adhering to the development code.
And to put that in plain English.
Yeah.
If, if a developer submits a spud or a pud today, because of the code language is sort of vague, it could be interpreted to mean that we can change any of your development guidelines, your subdivision ordinance rules, because we're a pud. We're adding language that says, if you want to change any development guidelines, any subdivision rules, you've got to tell us that when you're applying for the pud or the spud ahead of time. For example, if somebody comes with a spud and we assume that they're going to follow our five spaces per thousand parking rule, when in fact, they come two years later and they've submitted a plan that's got two spaces per thousand, and they say, well, because we're a spud, we're using creative design methodology to blah, blah, blah. Well, to us, they're not now adhering to our own code, and that's in conflict. So we're just adding language that says, if you want to vary from the code, you need to request it when you submit the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, I'd like a motion to recommend a public hearing for the ordinance that revises the development regulations, clarifying the intent to align modifications from typical standards.
All right. We have a motion by Julio Dumas to modify the standards, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition?
Object.
Commissioner Marchand objects. Anyone else?
And I'm going to let Ricky, you know, tape me through to number two, if I may.
The last one is simply, we went through the process of revising our zoning map, and we created a new overlay zone, and this is adding the language into our development code that defines that overlay zone and what the expectations are when somebody's developing property within the overlay.
Right. And I think we talked about that a long time ago when we did, when we did the cleanup map, as we called it.
Correct.
All right. Very good.
Did you make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. Make a motion to hold a public hearing for the overlay on a spud, pud, TND.
Second.
Motion by Julio Dumas to have a public hearing on the overlay zone, and seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition?
Object.
Objection by Commissioner Marchand. Any other objections? Motion carries. Okay. Item number nine.
Motion.
In our turn. Have a good Thanksgiving.